Acting Chair, Chair Pro Tem. And I had asked Commissioner Johnson earlier if she would take on that role, but you obviously can vote in anyone you wish. We just need a motion.
I move for Commissioner Johnson to serve as Acting Chair for this meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Madam Chair, apologies to the gallery for my tardiness and keeping everybody waiting.
Thank you for waiting. I'm Chair Pro Tem, Commissioner Johnson. We are going to open a special Metro Historic Zoning Commission of October 12th now. And before I open the meeting, I have to announce a legal disclaimer. Pursuant to the provision of Section 2.68.030 of the Metropolitan Code of Laws, notice is hereby given that final hearing before this commission is appealable to the Chancery Court of Davidson County or the Circuit Court of Davidson County via statutory writ of sorority. You are advised to seek your own independent legal counsel to ensure that your appeal is filed in a timely manner and that all the procedural requirements are met. You should also seek independent legal advice regarding the applicability of the writ of sorority to the specific decision of the Historic Zoning Commission. And before we start, here's a little technical reminder. Last time when I was Chair, we had technical difficulty, and since then, this audio system was repaired. But one thing we have to be careful is when you speak, do not double push it. Just push once and then wait a few seconds to release it. Otherwise, we will have another difficulty, so just a gentle reminder. Thank you.
Thank you for that reminder. Can everyone hear me okay? You can hear me okay back here? Thanks. Okay. This project is a multi-pronged... This project is a multi-pronged, multi-phase project to address bomb damage on Second Avenue from the Christmas 2020 morning bomb. These are the four most affected buildings of that disaster that you're going to be looking at today. This request is for reconstruction, rehabilitation, new construction, and some selective demolition. And it's all part of an SP that will eventually be reviewed by the Planning Commission and Metro Council. So a request for some actions are to provide immediate stabilization. And then for the SP, more specifically, you generally approve just a site plan and amassing is part one of that process, which is what we're in right now. Then if the SP is approved, the project will come back to you for all the final details. So again, the most immediate request is stabilization by capping the demising walls with mortar, adding interior steel shoring and bracing, and repairing gutters. Then for the SP, I'll take these buildings one at a time. Then I'll start with 170, which is at the bottom of the screen. So 170, the bottom building, the proposal is to construct a new facade on Second Avenue that's similar to the historic facade that's there, and repair the First Avenue facade, which is still existing. Then moving up to the yellow, 172, is essentially gone, so the proposal is to continue removal of that building and keep that space open. And then 174 and 176 will likely have their Second Avenue facades reconstructed, the historic facades reconstructed and repaired, and then repairing of the rear two walls, the First Avenue walls, which may require some selective demolition. You'll know more about that in Phase Two. The plan includes using salvaged materials for Second Avenue. However, those really need to be evaluated before we can know what can reasonably be reused. So again, that'll come to you with Part Two as well. And lastly, the project includes a flat-roofed and stepped-back rooftop addition that will span all four buildings. And then, of course, this is from Second Avenue, and then this one is what it will look like from First Avenue. And then this image provides a little more insight into the height of the addition. So in closing, we more specifically recommend demolition of 172, finding the proposal to meet Section 5.12, selective demolition and reconstruction of the First Avenue facades for 174 and 176 using existing materials, and selective demolition of the sidewalls of 170 and 174, finding the proposal to meet Section 3. Amassing and scale of the rooftop addition, we recommend approval of, finding that with that condition, the proposal meets Section 3H. And the amassing and scale of new facades for the Second Avenue side using salvaged materials in part. And again, this is just Part One, and if approved by you, Planning and Council, the project will come back to you with more details. Do you have any questions for me?
Madam Chairman, I do have... I have had experience with this particular project and therefore recuse myself from both the discussion and the vote.
Thank you, Vice Judge Stewart. So noted.
And the architect for the project, David Johnson, is here.
Thank you, Ms. DeGla, applicant. Please proceed. You have 10 minutes for the presentation, and you may reserve two minutes for the rebuttal if you wish.
Great. Thank you. Everybody can hear me. Appreciate the Board, the Commission, hearing us today as we talk about, really, this pivotal project in Second Avenue and the rehabilitation and reconstruction of these four properties. It's incredibly important to not only the owners of the property, but the neighbors of the property, the district downtown, and really all of Nashville, because this is such a near and dear piece to the history and fabric of Nashville. I would like to talk today about three specific items. As you see on the screen, the property stabilization, how we plan to reuse the salvaged materials, and then ultimately what that revitalization of that property looks like and, you know, really what the vision is. So... Under property stabilization, I think all of us know what those buildings look like, how much damage they took on Christmas morning. So from that moment on, the facades were gone. And so we have to find a way to bring these back. In March, the selective debris removal at the bottom of that pile are the facades. Thankfully, with the help of the district and then Tiny's Demolition, who worked on this work, we were able to salvage quite a bit, and I'll talk about that here in a second. As you can see, the facades generally look that... The buildings look like that today with a couple of exceptions on some work that we've done to help repair those walls. This image shows really the three things in the stabilization concept that I'd like to talk to you about. Number one, the repair of the gutters and the downspouts on the 174 and 176 elevations on First Avenue. There is a gutter and a downspout system. Those have been repaired so that the water that is running off those roofs do hit the existing downspouts that are on the side. We sealed up the holes where the missing downspout was, so that should help further water damage to those facades. So it was a fairly easy fix. Those downspouts, I think, were missing since December... July of 2017 was the last photograph I saw. So not that long. Secondly, as you note up in the upper left-hand corner, we wanted to cover the remaining masonry walls that are in place today, the three between the four buildings. We have put a protective mortar wash over the tops of those walls to help really stop any further deterioration of the mortar and the brick as it is today. Thirdly, and most importantly, are those red dashed lines that you see. There are two ways, at least two ways, to help stabilize these five-story tall walls. One is with external temporary shoring or to go in with a permanent system that would also act as the primary structure for the new build. So our intention with, as you see in that red diagram, is basically a matrix or a grid of permanent steel columns that would support the new structure and beams that will help support those walls. The reason we're doing that is for the new build, it's required to build that out of steel. It can't be done under current codes with the wood structure that exists. Here's a photograph of the masonry walls that have been repaired and the downspout... The holes for the downspout have been sealed up so that it does work in those gutters that exist today. This diagram shows that this happens to be the Clarksville Courthouse that was destroyed or badly damaged with a tornado. A very similar concept to this, where we'll go on the inside with structure, both horizontal and vertically, to help support those walls with braces and pins through the wall to help straighten them out. The good news is, which is a little different than this picture, is those do remain permanent versus those horizontal ladders that you see. We have salvaged about 30,000 brick on Bill Faye's Tiny Demolition Site in addition to the property or the materials that the district has stored. Our intention is to use every bit of those as long as we can get those to fit with current codes. You'll notice the larger photograph, a number of the face bricks were, of course, obliterated due to the bomb. Other items like that scale, the fireplace surround, all of those do remain. We do plan to reuse those from the interior architecture. One of the more significant items of note in these buildings are the demising walls and, of course, the foundation or the limestone base walls. We want to keep those all that we can and use those for the character and the atmosphere going forward. So when I talk about the vision or the revitalization of these four properties, as Robb noted, the yellow area is really taking on the ULI's recommendation, the national report that they had done about making a connection down to the river through these buildings. In order to do that, we're going to need to recoup some of that square footage with the roof additions. Important to note here, the green facade, the one on the left, that remains probably the best shape of all of these facades. Minor work to be done on that preservation, some minor cosmetic work on the mortar to make sure that it all looks good. The 174 and 176 elevations are in the yellow-orange area. As Robb noted, partial removal of those and then rebuild to exactly as it is today. Coincidentally, that was done with the green one in 19... I think it's '81. The purple areas show the new build. And you'll note that these cast iron columns and those storefronts, as much of that that remains that the district was able to save, we would like to keep and restore and not so much recreate, but use that as a model to keep that same look going forward. In the sketches here, you can see that each one of those pieces are noted to be within the historic preservation guidelines. The height of the facade, the height of the addition, all the materials will be obviously gone through your commission to make sure that we meet all the historic guidelines for those. We really do want to focus on this idea of a connector between the river, First Avenue, and Second Avenue to create more pedestrian activity, to really activate that street. There are steps. It's not... There's 17 feet of fall between the First and Second Avenues that we want to work with. These facades on First Avenue, we don't want to think of those as the back of the buildings. These are, as we'll call it, Nashville's front porch. It shows up in every televised activity that happens in Nashville. We want to make sure that that shows off the city very well. As you see it in this photograph, it's the same way it will look when we're finished. As you can see here, the same brick. As much as we can keep of those facades, we would absolutely do that. Here's a quick thought on what that connector would look like. Here's some places around the world where we can use those pedestrian ways to really activate this street and bring new life back to the north part of Second Avenue. From an interior perspective, these are just some image shots of reusing the brick, reusing as much of the old-growth wood that we can in the interior architectural elements and creating a space that not only speaks to the history of the building, but the history of the people that used to own these buildings, like Tennessee Whiskey, Charles Nelson. Any of these ideas we really see as being appropriate for both the district, for the developer, the owners of these properties, and the city. And that's it. So we'd like to respectfully request approval of our application for the rehabilitation of these four properties.
Thank you. Commissioners, do you have a question to the applicant? Or you can ask anytime.
I have a question, just, I think, related to... If I understand it, this is... The elevations are sort of conceptual. What's drawn there is to give us an idea of amassing those, the kind of things that we're reviewing. Is that maybe a question to staff? Is that...
That's right. Since this is Part One of the SP, it's just a conception, and then the details will come back to you, assuming that the use of the SP is approved.
So if you don't have any questions to the applicant at this moment, I'm going to open the floor to the public. If a public who would wish to speak in support, please come forward and state your name, address. Public, if you wish to speak in opposition, please come forward, state your name, address, and you have two minutes to speak.
Hi, my name is Devinder Sandhu. I'm an engineer with Sandhu Consultants in Nashville, Tennessee. I am very, very glad that we're saving these buildings. Thank you to Mr. Cullen, the owner, and Mr. Johnson for coming up with a beautiful plan. I was hired initially by Metro Codes to go in very soon after the bombing to evaluate the safety of these buildings. Many structural engineers had gone in and said they're going to fall in on everybody. I went in, after looking at it from outside. The buildings are robust and sound, and I am so glad that we're saving them. We put together a team of experts from around the country, including a couple of local folks, Harry Smith and Adam Snead with Wasco, who actually did the restoration at the Clarksville Courthouse and have been involved with many other projects on Second Avenue. Graham Reed, a master mason from England, who actually helped restore some similar brick buildings in England after the bombing by the British during World War II. And he will have a moment to say here shortly. Masonry Solutions International out of Baltimore that have done restoration all over the world and are dedicated to saving the historic fabric of communities all over the U.S. and in other countries. And they... Wayne Ruth from Masonry Solutions came down here and gave a presentation. They have some wonderful technology that I will show you in a minute that will help restore some of these buildings. And hopefully, Mr. Johnson will be willing to look at some of this technology to help with the stabilization of our historic fabric in Nashville. We also had Atkinson-Nolan structural engineers out of Colorado, who... Time over? Okay. I just want to... And the last one is another structural engineer from New Orleans that has done a lot of work in New Orleans from hurricanes on similar buildings. So if I may, I just want to show you a couple of items that are used in stabilizing buildings, including a compatible injectable fill, which shows you how brick... This unreinforced brick masonry can be saved with an injection that we can put in there. And I'll just pass this around to you. Okay? And if you have questions, I can answer those.
What's the time? Two minutes? Okay. Thank you. We will take a look at it. And because of public hearing, we have a two-minute rule, so... Yes. The staff will definitely examine. Thank you. Appreciate it.
May I ask a question to Mr. Sandhu?
Certainly.
Sure. Just, since I didn't quite think you got directly to your point, what... You know, we got a lot of your stuff in our public comment before the meeting. I got to read over it. You know, as you are looking at, you know, this plan now as opposed to, I think, you know, a few months ago when they applied for full demolition, which maybe some of this came from, you know, what now would be, I guess, what you're supportive of in your professional opinion on this project?
Thank you. I'm very supportive that we've decided to save the buildings. The only comment I would have is that Mr. Johnson and the owners consider non-destructive evaluation of each wall in all the buildings to see where we can strengthen the walls and what methodology and technology we can use to strengthen them. And I have all that information available for them if they are willing to meet with us and discuss it. And it would actually save a lot of money in the long run.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Commissioner Jones. Is there any other public wish to speak? Please don't be shy. Come forward.
Mr. Chairman, members of committee. My name is Graham Reed. I was born in Cambridge, England, in 1943 during the Second World War. I graduated school at age 15, and as was the custom in those days, was inducted into a five-year apprenticeship by my father and the master builder to teach me all and beyond the craft of brick and stone masonry. Following that apprenticeship, I then embarked on another five years to become a master builder. Over the years, I've had the privilege to work, design, and advise on many varying masonry projects. My first job with a master builder at the age of 15 was to help rebuild a section of a row of masonry-built houses that had been bombed by German aircraft. The houses were built beside a rail line bridge. The bombs missed the bridge and landed instead on the row of houses. At that time, most houses were constructed with solid masonry products, as are the buildings on Second Avenue. At the request of the engineers, who have known me and witnessed my skills over the years, I recently toured the damage to the buildings on Second Avenue caused by the Christmas Day bombing and noted that the damage was very similar to the buildings in Cambridge during the Second World War. My first impression was one of disbelief as we toured. I was scanning my mind as to how I would approach the restoration process. These buildings do not need to be demolished. The method would be here would be to brace and secure the walls as the masonry is repaired, replaced, and reinforced using low-pressure masonry injection methods, CSI, and grouting would be strong.
Thank you. If you would complete your thought, your time's up.
Okay. Well, that's about all I can tell you at the moment. I do have other things I could say, but if my time's up.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you. State your name and address. You have two minutes.
Okay, thank you, Chairperson. Members of the committee, I'm Brian Mansfield, the Advocacy Chair of Historic Nashville.
Sorry. You have five minutes.
Okay. I'll try to get done in under two. My address is 6908 River Ridge Drive in Nashville. The plans that we've seen for rebuilding this section of Second Avenue are impressive, and we know that the downtown business community is excited by them. We do want to ensure as easement holders on some of these properties that any reconstruction is reviewed either through the easement purview or the historic tax credit process. Historic Nashville does favor terminating the easement on 172 as that building is entirely destroyed. But instead of terminating the majority of the easements, however, we propose that they be amended to acknowledge the casualty event and the reconstruction of the facades, except for 172. This way, there will continue to be some accountability for the restoration of the facades in the event that the historic tax credits do not come to fruition. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else wish to speak? Applicant, Mr. Johnson? Do you have anything else you would like to add?
Yes. It's a nice surprise to have so many experts in the audience today concerning these buildings. I will add that we have two structural engineers on this project. One did work with... On the Clarksville Courthouse, as you saw in the photographs in the restoration of those walls. In addition to that, we have an engineer, WJ E., out of Atlanta, who coincidentally is the company that Stephen Kelly worked for. So they're very familiar with his work and his expertise. And so that's really helped us and guided us on how we should move forward. And then I think really, as we look at the amount of demolition that we're talking about versus where we were back this summer, is remarkable. And I think the collective wisdom and the team effort, I'd say, with all involved to save these buildings will turn out in the end to be the best process. Thank you.
Thank you. So now I will close public hearing, and we are moving into deliberation. Since it's an important decision, I will ask each commissioners go around. Would you like to start, Commissioner Jones?
Sure. I have just two things, just for our public comment. Just that it seemed they both got cut short, two of them. We received your comments before the meeting. It's in our... It was in our packet. I believe most of us, you know, have read through it, just so you know. But thank you again for coming and participating in this process. For regarding the Historic Nashville and the facades, I know a lot of that was in our packet, some information, but that is something that we haven't come up against too much as a lot of our work tends to be more on Broadway and things like that. So I would just... If I could get a refresher, just on that process or what might happen?
H&amp;I does hold easements on all four of these buildings, both the First Avenue and Second Avenue facades, but we don't have the authority to force the owner to keep those easements. That's a legal matter, and Kate may want to weigh in, but that's a legal matter between H&amp;I and the building owners.
So really, there's nothing our commission can do or not... Or avoid doing, you know, to... Okay. That's just... It's just a process that we haven't come up against that much in my memory.
Yes, I was just going to reiterate what Mr. Walker said. It is... This is not within the commission's authority. That program is just not part of the commission's authority. It's obviously good to know and good to... You can consider it as something, but it's not something you all can do anything about, if that makes sense.
And then just to elaborate, just from, you know, all the work, I'd just like to thank everyone that's been involved in these past several, I guess, you know, over a year now of this. And, you know, this plan, this SP, I think, is step one. You know, re... Again, I would encourage, you know, and hopefully look for the... You know, the most that we can possibly salvage out of these buildings. It's just so important for our city and for Second Avenue. I do... I like that, you know, they've come back with this plan that is a cohesive... make use. And I know the, I was very into the, you know, the ULI report of connecting first and second, and how that's always kind of been a wish for the city. So, you know, using this terrible thing to maybe enact a few new kind of special things for Second Avenue, I think, is a good idea. So, you know, I'm with the reuse and just as selective, you know, as we can be, and using these smart technologies to save as much as we can, I'm, you know, inclined to be supportive of this, this first step in this SP.
Thank you, Commissioner Jones. Commissioner Mahal.
I have a couple of disclosures to make. I serve on the board of the district, and probably within a week after the bombing, Metropolitan Historical Commission Foundation asked to partner with the district to fundraise for items that, money that we could spend, like securing the bricks. I think we paid for an additional engineer's report, and by virtue of serving on that board, I did watch the planning commission, Mr. Johnson, make the presentation to the planning commission. And he also, they also conducted a telephone call with the board of the district, and it was after the planning commission. It was pretty much just a repeat of what the presentation of the planning commission. And so I wanted to disclose that. In no small part is my confidence here with Ron Goble, who the mayor appointed to help spearhead this project. Ron, I've known, has been my friend for over 30 years, and he, his business is specialized in rehab of historic properties. Did the Worthing, did the Quarters, did Crest, did Cathedral, Incarnation, I mean, just anything that you can see that has done, they've done a great job, the Hermitage Hotel. And so I have a lot of faith and confidence in him, and I think that all of Nashville can place that confidence well. And if, and this project that you all have brought to us exceeds my expectations of what can be done to, on this, as a result of this very tragic event. And so I appreciate all the hard work that everybody's put into this. I appreciate everybody caring about this so much, and I'm inclined to vote in favor of this SP.
Thank you. Commissioner Mahal, Commissioner Mosley.
Yes, I'll do my best not to repeat what's been said by the commissioners, which I echo. I think the facades themselves, we see on the screen, kind of speak for themselves in terms of preserving the fabric of Second Avenue and reconstructing it. The pass-through element, I think, given that that building was the shallowest and suffered the most damage, architecturally, it's a response to recommendations to connect two streets that will enliven, just in people walking around and tourism, but also economically, it is the right situation and the right set of circumstances for something like that to happen. And something that hadn't been spoken about, but I think falls under the same guise or under the same set of, or consideration under those circumstances, is the setback, the additions on the upper floors that are set back. I think while not every situation would warrant that type of intrusion into the historic fabric, we've certainly seen it before on Broadway, less so in this district, but it is subdued and certainly stepped back from both facades in such a way that, both based on the staff's recommendations and what's presented here seems appropriate for the circumstances.
Thank you, Commissioner Mosley. As a chair, if I may, take a little privilege to comment. I would like to thank everybody involved with this project, and especially our own Vice Chair, Stuart, and former Planning Commissioner, Goble, and most of our staff and applicant. It is a really big task, and when we first received demolition application, I'm sure everybody was so shocked. And from that point, to come to this wonderful dream may come true, is a great hard work done by everybody and every community. And I think Nashville is really unique in that sense, because we can preserve and respect the history, at the same time, we can introduce moderate density and, you know, unique prospect. So I think this project has great potential, and I think because of the damage, you know, foundational damage, so we really have to now work swiftly so, to prevent further damage on the structural damage. So I would like to thank everybody who are involved in this project to make this happen in a swift manner. And so now I will accept the motion. Who would like to jump in?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the plans for the SP on the buildings on Second Avenue that were damaged by the bombing.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this motion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Four to nothing. Motion passes. Thank you. Appreciate it. Is there any other business, Ms. Ziegler? Thank you very much. We close today's hearing. Thank you.
This has been a service of the Metro Nashville Network. If you would like to see this presentation again, or for more information about this and other programs, visit Nashville.gov.